That's all right. No, 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 it's fine. I'll, I'll, it's all right. I, I get the diminished.
All right, listen up everyone. Good evening everyone and welcome to the Monday, September the 25th, 2023 Groveland Board of Selectmen meeting. I'd like to introduce everyone at the table here. For those of you that don't know us, we have our Town Administrator, to my far left Rebecca Oldham, Kathy Castrenellis, Selectwoman, Jason Neves, Selectman, Mark Parento on my right, and to my far right is Edward Watson. My name's Daniel McDonald, be the chairman this evening. Please join us and say in the Pledge of the Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. Public comment, do we have any this evening?
Nope.
Okay. Next up, discussion and possible vote. First one is approval of a one-day liquor license for Susan Winslow on behalf of the Georgetown Music Parents, Inc. for October the 7th, 2023 from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM for a public event at V.C. Memorial Park. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Susan Winslow on behalf of the Georgetown Music Parents, Inc. for October 7th, 2023 from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at V.C. Memorial.
Does there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Anyone like to discuss it? Put it to a vote. All those in favor. Edward?
Yes.
It's unanimous. And number two, approval of a special event permit for the use of Perry Park by Groveland Congressional Church for the blessing of animals on October the 8th, 2023. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event permit for the use of Perry Park by Groveland Congressional Church for the blessing of the animals, October 8th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Kathy? Sound good? All those in favor?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Approval of a property use permit from Norwood Insurance for the use of Elm Park to display signs promoting the Run for the Troops 5K from October 1st, 2023 through November the 11th, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the property use permit for Norwood Insurance for the use of Elm Park to display signs promoting the Runs for the Troops 5K from October 1st, 2023 through November 11th, 2023.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Yes.
In unanimous. Excuse me. Number four, approval of a field use permit for the use of Pine Softball Field by Pennsylt Youth Softball for September the 10th, 2023 through October the 28th, 2023 for Saturday games from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM and Friday night's practice from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve field use permit for the use of the Pine Softball Field by Pennsylt Youth Softball for September 10th, 2023 through October 28th, 2023 for Saturday games, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM and Friday night practices, 5:30 to 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rebecca, have, have those times and dates been, I guess, screened for any conflicts or anything?
Yes, they have. And they are clear.
No issues?
No issues. We're just waiting for their certificate of insurance.
Okay, so if we make a motion, it should be contingent upon certificate of insurance?
That's correct.
That's your recommendation?
Yes, please.
All right, anyone on the board?
No.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll amend the motion to, oh, we already did.
Oh, there was, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a motion.
I'll just amend it.
Amend the motion, Joe.
To make sure that the insurance has been received prior to.
And that's part of a complete application?
That's correct.
So, motion will be for a complete application. Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Number five, pavement management plan presentation is from the Highway Superintendent, Rennie Carroll. How are you, sir?
How are we doing?
Fine, thank you. Did you just want to say who you are? I already said it.
Rennie Carroll, Highway Superintendent for the Town of Groveland.
Thank you.
So, the paving maintenance program that was laid out for the town by Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, this was something I worked with the town planner, now Town Administrator Rebecca Oldham. We have a cost assessment that's included in this. Beginning date was back in 2021 for our first year. Total cost was that for about $253,000. Included several roads in the town. The next, the following year, I think three of those roads were targeted and paved. The following year, we took a different avenue because we did the sidewalks on Route 97. So, it pushed us back a year on this program. But if I'm looking at it correctly, Senna Street, basically from the St. Patrick's Church down to the highway, the highway garage at 160 was done. So, that was on the plan. We're pretty close to on schedule, other than we pushed back a year on this program due to other construction restraints. This particular year is a challenging year for us. Our Chapter 90 is, has been limited because we used a lot of it to do the sidewalks. And we also have the ongoing issue with the Salem Street Dam. We have an unexpect, unexpended contract balance of $380,000 in Chapter 90 funds. Roughly 75, 67,000 to 75,000 of that will be used to pave Lower Senna Street before the end of this construction season. And then I'll hold on to the remainder balance in case we run into any issues with the culvert at Lower, I'm sorry, at Salem Street, at the Salem Street Dam. So, that's kind of where we're at from '21 to present date.
Is that, um, street blocked off? I haven't been over there, but can you tell us the status of it?
No, right now, so we, we had a couple of failures of the road, mainly in the sidewalk and edge of road where we had sinkholes from the deplorable condition of the culvert. The pipe, it's a, if you know anything about it, it's an old metal corrugated pipe. It's basically 60 inches in diameter. The bottom of it has been gone for, I can't even tell you, way before I got here back in 2019 when I did an inspection on that myself. There was no bottom to the pipe and it looks like there hadn't been a bottom to the pipe for many years. We've done emergency action plan. We've done multiple inspections. It was deemed a significant hazard, I think, back in 19, I'm sorry, 2017. So, every year we have to do inspection, field inspection and an engine and inspection.
How does that affect the road condition? Is it kind of like it's just collapsing and sinking?
So, surprisingly, we have had a couple of collapses along the edge of the road where the pipe is degraded the most on the outfall side. I've sensed we've done corrective measures. Two times we put flowable fill over the top. Flowable fill's kind of like a pliable concrete. So, it will flex and yield, but it won't break away and it won't deteriorate or erode with the water. So, it's like a construction-based flowable fill. It basically sets up like concrete. So, we poured roughly about 10 yards of that over the top of the pipe in those two areas. The last one back, actually on the 4th of July, was our last pour. Since then, we've had no issues with the road. And we've had some pretty significant rain, as we all know, this year. So, it's stabilized to the point where we're now, we have an engineered plan. We have a contract in place. We're just working on funding. I think this January, we'll be working with DCR and trying to get some funding in place so we can do corrective measures long-term for that culvert. So, that's kind of the plan. I'm holding on to the Chapter 90 money. If there are any unforeseen issues, we don't have a rainy day fund. My budget doesn't allow for rainy day fund. So, holding on to the Chapter 90 money is kind of my only option to deal with it if some unforeseen issue arises, which is possible but not probable at this point.
Okay. Do you, do you need the Board of Selectmen to help you in any way?
So, I think, hopefully at this point, me and Rebecca have a pretty good plan in place. Funding will be, the, the application will go out in January and funding will probably come, I think, late March or April. Rebecca, do you know when the funding, I don't know exactly when the funding would hit or the, the grant, I should say, would be funded.
So, we're still in the middle of going back and forth because the C-Wall and dams grant was a revolving, excuse me, a loan program.
Right.
And that kind of put a damper in our plans and the hope for them to come forward with a full allocation for the project. So, we were going to take a look at DCR and I'm not sure we had yet determined the thresholds for that particular grant and whether or not there was going to be a match required. So, I think we're still waiting to hear back from DCR. I believe you're working with Bernadette over at Mass, uh, DCR?
DCR, yeah.
Um, so we're still looking into those funding options. But if we do go forward with the loan program, you're correct, it starts in January, the application becomes available and the awards would go out, I believe, in the early summertime, late spring, early summer.
Kathy, do you have any questions?
Um, yes, I do. So, I had asked to have this brought for you because I've been getting emails and calls from people to understand what is our road plan. So, when I asked about the road plan, I was told that the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission designed one, but the Board of Selectmen never voted it through. So, I think the Board should at least vote and accept this road plan that was put together. It showed that 38% of the roads were deficient and poor. So, my concern with holding back and always waiting in case something else happens, we're going to end up back where we were when I first moved into town. Within five years of myself moving here, the postmaster was, began to refuse to deliver mail on certain roads because the conditions were so poor. And this is the kind of email, I got an email from a person I haven't heard from the whole time they lived here. And we went to college together and said, what is going on with the roads in town? So, I guess what I would like to see myself on the Board of Selectmen, I see the plan, I see the map, but I don't know specifically, out of all of these roads that are in the poor and deficient, I'm assuming you're hitting the deficient before the poor, how many of these actually got done?
So...
I mean, could we get, I'm just saying, can we get a report that says these roads are done?
So, that's when we update the plan with?
Well, yes, I'd like to see us following the plan and updating. And therefore, like when somebody does say, my road's falling apart, when is it going to get done? I mean, I'd like to see this put in a simpler form on our website. I understand you're highly technical, the terminology.
It is. And you've got to remember too, this is a, this, this paving maintenance plan is, it's not like the Bible to go by. So, this is, this is, they degrade the roads and it's, you know, there's a plan in place, but you've got to remember, some of the roads that they're talking about are neighborhoods. The roads may be in deficient areas, but we also have major thoroughfare roads like 97 and Main Street and Salem Street that are falling apart that you might see a lot more traffic on. So, it's a, it's a, it's a very complex plan in that they have, you know, these are the roads that you should do in this, like, manner, but it, it doesn't always trans, you know, it, it doesn't always work out that you can do those roads.
Are you saying that Merrimack Valley Planning didn't take into account the major roads when they did the road plan?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that the plan is...
Okay. So, what I'm, what I'm saying is that this plan was designed and tailor-made to fit our Chapter 90 annual allocation. That part of it I understand.
Yeah.
And I feel that for a town to stay on track and on budget, we have to pay attention to the plan, even if we have to revise it. But we have to be following something. We can't just start kind of going off and pulling back to finish a sidewalk if we have a road that's in a terrible category. So, that's my concern that we have, like I said, 38% in the deficient and poor category. To me, it doesn't matter if there's somebody's neighborhood street or the Main Street. You know, I get it, there's more traffic on a Main Street, but if the road is falling apart, it's falling apart.
Correct.
And I think that we're supposed to, I don't know why we wouldn't, each year, update this plan and at town meeting have an, have a sheet in the back of the town meeting report that says, this is what we're anticipating to address this coming year. So, that folks will know, you know, when their road is coming up. And that was the beauty of the, before you came, we had, the one thing that worked well was a citizen-run road group.
Yes.
And they did. They delivered a report. We knew which roads were coming up and when they had to adjust, they adjust. And I get it, other things come up and you have to adjust to it. But I think we have to at least keep coming back to the plan and adjusting it and then updating people because otherwise, if we lose track of it, two or three years down the line, all of a sudden, we're, we're worse off than when we started the plan. And I don't want to see that happen.
So, if I could just, if I could?
Yeah, that's my concern.
My, my one concern is that, not concern, but one thing that I think you should know is that going all the way back to 2012, 2012, almost 10 years ago, our budget for Chapter 90 has not increased in a significant manner at all.
Uh huh.
And you know the prices of everything have gone significantly higher. So, in 2012, our Chapter 90 budget was $214,000.
Right.
Our chapter, our Chapter 90 allocation as of this year is only $227,000.
And it's based on our road miles, correct?
It's based on, it's a very weird demographic that Chapter 90 goes by. It's not just, it's not just your road miles, it's your population. It's the yearly income. It's, there's a many, there's a lot of different factors, very odd, I'd say. But we all know where the cost of construction and asphalt and oil have gone.
Correct.
Through the roof. So, our ability to do what we used to do back in 2012 is not even half of that.
Right, but this plan was made in 2020, right? So...
It was made in 2020 and, and you can, you know, you can look at it and, you know, there's a, there's a, an assessment and a cost, but their assessment and their cost, even in 2021, is 30, 40, $50,000 off.
Off, okay.
Like, if I was to pave the roads that they said to pave, it would cost us over $350,000. So, I mean, it's just, it's a little off in that number.
I understand.
But to go forward, like I said, the Chapter 90 money for two years I saved to redo the sidewalks on Route 97 because I cringed when I saw people walking down those sidewalks. I couldn't look anymore at people walking on those sidewalks or kids walking to school because the sidewalks were nearly unpassable in my eyes. So, to me, that was a very important milestone, was to finish that stretch of road and get new sidewalks done. My planning before the issue on Salem Street was to repave 97, repave part of Salem Street and do Lower Senna Street this year. If everybody saw all that pavement this year, then we'd be not on track because we're, we're not, we're never going to be exactly where we need to be. But we'd be a lot, in a little better situation than we are right now.
Right. So, you could give us an, an update to say what, on this plan, we did do. And the other thing that I would offer to you as part of your budget process, if there was a street, you know, in that deficient, the lowest category that we kept pushing off or kept getting pushed off because it, you know, wasn't a priority. At one time, this town was favorable towards passing what was called a capital exclusion. And that was money used to pave a road. It was a one-year blip in the tax rate.
Yeah, they did that. I think it was like Vote for Roads. Mr. O'Callaghan used to do it like every year.
Well, people did, if we got, like I said, if, I understand where you're coming from cost-wise.
Yep.
Where I'm coming from is just plan-wise, when I don't know that we've pushed off roads for a year or two because of the sidewalk. I did not know that. So, I don't know how to answer the question. I feel that if we're all on the same page and the townspeople know what roads we're going to do, then when the day comes that you say, hey, you know what, I need 50 or 100,000 to really get us to a better place on the roads.
Yep.
The capital exclusion would probably pass because people would have bought into it. They'd say, these are the roads that have gotten done. He's only able to get this many done because of the cost.
Right.
And it's sort of like a buy-in. You know, right now, I look at it as the buy-in. We've got to show people what you're doing, get them to buy in, so that if the day comes, which sounds like it might, where we will need to have an additional fund in one year to help bring us back on to track again, we can do that.
Okay.
That would, that would be awesome. So, if you could take it and just break it into just, you know, a shorter term, one to five-year, what you think we're doing, what we did do, what you're going to do this year and then maybe next year, that would be awesome.
Certainly.
I'd appreciate that.
Yeah.
Jason?
Um, I agree in terms of seeing something like this online for people to look at, just to have an idea. But I'm more curious, how often is it updated?
Um, since '21, it has not been updated. But with all due respect, we haven't, because we were saving money for the sidewalks, we didn't do a whole heck of a lot of paving.
Right.
There wasn't a, typically when you give an update, you have a significant amount of information to share to be updated. I'm not saying there's none, but it's, it's somewhat minimal. I think...
Well, I think, I think the one thing that would be beneficial is just the dates.
Yeah.
Because, because if things, as things get pushed back, then people are a little bit more aware of it.
Oh, absolutely.
And I agree with, with holding for the funds for the Salem Street Dam, just because that is a major pass-through. And if that collapses and we suddenly find ourselves with no money and that road gets closed for any length of time, it's going to be major impact for us and everybody else.
Yeah.
So, I understand that. And to me, that makes a lot of sense. But yeah, I definitely would like to see something like this that gets updated regularly, just as a information point, something that we can go back to look at, yeah.
That's why we got it.
I think it's great.
I, I just want to make sure that you, obviously, you contacted the Water Department on this plan, like for water mains and stuff.
I always talk to the Water Superintendent before.
I assume you do, I just...
Yeah, I don't repave roads. He's going to pick them up. So, yeah, that's, that's a fluent motion that we always have that contact.
It's like, balchews, water mains, you know, needed to be done about 30 years ago.
If it gets the water main done, I'll repave the road. Yep.
Yeah, all right. I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Edward?
Uh, Rennie, this draft list, July 10th, 2021.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, could you go down the list and just indicate which ones are completed?
Sure. Um, so, Seven Star Road, Year One, uh, I think he had that in May, 2022. That area was paved from Beer Hill down to Senna Street. Um, his active was 78,000. It was actually just under $100,000 to repave that section of road. The other section of Seven Star from Broad, over, just over the hill at Wood, uh, was roughly about 4,600 feet. Um, again, that was, uh, 86,000? I think he has it at 75. So, those, that, those two sections of Seven Star have been done.
The first and second one on the list?
Yeah, and then Seven Star, I'm sorry, Senna Street, that section is, that's the section that, that I referenced in the beginning of the conversation from St. Patrick's Church. Um, it's just before the town yard. I think it's 155 Senna Street roughly. So, that's been done. Um, Lower Senna Street, that's on my hit list before the end of this construction season. And that encompasses, uh, I think it's the, the first two Senna Streets that total about $55,000. I have that estimated up over 70 right now. So, if you look at Senna Street, 00B and 00D, he's got that around 60,000. I have it almost at 70 or above. Um, and then there's, you know, Birch, Palmera, Linden, those are all, so, so when you start reclaiming roads, that's when that cost that, you know, he just has the, the reclaim price. He doesn't have those as the repaved price. So, you know, when you reclaim a road, that's full-depth construction. So, that's very expensive. So, we're talking about regrading, putting down three and a half inches of binder, two inches of top, resetting all the structures on the street. So, that, when he, when he has that number in there, that is just the reclaim price. So, 14,000, 3,000, 7,000, those numbers are just the reclaim. You can add, I mean, off the top of my head, just that section of Birch is probably 70, 80,000 to reconstruct that road. Um, that would be almost half of our Chapter 90. So, I mean, you know, he has, a lot of this information is great, but it's not 100% complete repaved road. Washington Street, that's another section of road that's on the year two plan. That was pushed because of the sidewalks. Um, that second section, those two sections of Senna Street, that's the stuff that I'm going to do, that I talked about. Chestnut, coal plan and overlay, you know, those are small sections of road. I, I would, you know, and I had this conversation during his, his preliminary, you know, talk about this stuff, you know, you don't mill 600 feet of road and then repave that one little section. You kind of, you know, you want to do, to make it cost-effective, you mill a good section of road and repave it. You're going to mob all the equipment out there, you get all the manpower, you do it all. Um, so, you know, going back to year three or down to year three, you can also incorp, incorporate that other section of Senna Street. So, you see school streets on there, down at number three, just after Knox. That's that section of school street that I wanted to pave this year from Parker, basically down to Gardner. Um, we're holding up on that, obviously, because of the money that we're holding on to for the Salem Street Dam. So, you know, that's our year three stuff, right there. So, that's where we are right now, year three. Um, you know, Pond Street's a neighborhood that definitely could use an overlay and pave. But then again, he's only talking about paving 300 feet of Pond Street. It's not, you don't pave, like, to, it's more, it costs more money to mob the equipment out there than it is to pave that section. It's not cost-effective. So, um, that's what I mean. It's not a Bible. It's, it, it's a, it's a great tool to know where your roads are and sections. But, um, you know, and then coming up on year four next year, we'll have to go back to year three and we'll start picking away at some of these, you know, these smaller, you know, Elm Park Extension is that last little section of Elm Park down to, I just paved that Grove Street. So, there's that section of Elm Park. That was the 15,000. That, that'll be where I start off next year. Um, and everything goes well with our grant and our funding for Salem Street and, and we'll be, we won't be as far behind as it looks right now. Because if we don't have to spend that money on Salem Street and we get grants in place, which is looking promising, then we'll be in a lot better situation come next year. We'll have a lot of paving to do and we'll catch up on it.
Edward, you all set?
Yeah, that, thank you. That, that explained. Thank you very much.
Cash, one more question?
Sure.
So, fuck, you know, concerned resident, you know, wants to get ahold and say, hey, what are you going to do my road? What are you going to do my street? It's got potholes that, you know, it's, you know, it's a slalom course or something, you know?
Absolutely.
Um, would you be able to give them a tentative, well, maybe next spring or maybe the year after? Would, do you get many of those phone calls frequently?
No, I get them and I look at the plan and I look at, you know, where we have adjusted. They might be, they might have been on the list for last year or this year. They pushed back a year. So...
So, you'd be able to communicate with them and give them some, a tentative schedule?
Absolutely.
But I mean, if, if we have a bad winter and you have more frost eaves and road damage, then?
Right.
I mean, you have to triage that first.
And honestly, the highway guys go out. We do a lot of stuff in-house. They overlay roads. We just overlaid a section the other day of, um, Rollins. The guys went out with like 25 tons or 30 tons of asphalt in the paver and they did, you know, they, they extend the life of the road. I know it's not just potholes, but when they do small sections of road that are bad.
Yeah.
You know, that gets us through the winter, that pushes us on, you know, so that we're not having to adjust to potholes every two days or two storms or whatever it is. So...
All right. So, is this report going to be updated by you and when?
No, I will pass the information on to the professionals and, and have Merrimack Valley Planning give us a fully updated roster of where we are, what needs to be done, and push everything down the list that was done.
What's the timeline on that?
Um, I'll talk to them in the next, in the coming weeks.
Monser years, I mean.
I would say in the spring, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So, we get through this construction season and... So we get through this construction season, and then in the spring, we'll have a fresh, a fresh list of what we need to do and where we are.
Okay. Anyone have any follow-up questions?
Well, yeah, just, um...
We've got another presentation, just be mindful of. Continue.
Shut up. Thank you. I think it's important that we have a plan from you as to what roads were done the past year and then what roads are going to be done hopefully the next year. There's always going to be something else popping up, I'm sure. I was under the impression that the sidewalks on School Street were being paid through a grant. I had no idea that we were redirecting our Chapter 90 funding towards that. So I'd like to understand and know and follow the money. I understand the Salem Street Dam is a concern. You know, I've looked at it, I've seen the amount of water there, it wasn't, it wasn't like an avalanche. And I also read that they're supposed to be looking for alternate ideas, because everything seems to cost a million dollars nowadays. How much is that going to be? A million dollars? And this dam, since I've lived in town, we've talked about this dam. And it really is, you know, planks, right? It's not a Hoover Dam. So, you know, I'd like to see, going forward, you know, be more proactive. What else could we do rather than, is there something other than a million dollars that we can do to stabilize the situation with the water flow? Could we put the dam further down, further up, anything, you know, to get us in a position where we're not halting our roadwork, putting all the Chapter money, 90 money aside, you understand? Because we already did that for the School Street sidewalks. Now we're doing it for the Salem Street Dam, you know. And I'm just, my concern is just watching the way things have gone in this town over 30 years. We're just going to keep doing that, and it's going to take, you know, our highway superintendent, you, the guy on the ground here that says, hey, I have to do this, this, and this, at least this year, or we're going to be in trouble. Now, if you're telling me, I understand your whole point about the 300 feet and all that. So I give you license, you know, you come up with your ideas of how much you want to do in each road, but I think we need to get a buy-in on the road maintenance program here, so that if the day comes where you do need the additional funding to get on track, people will say, oh, I know, he's been doing this and this, then he had to do the dam, but then he went right back and he did this and this. I can't say that now, because I don't know the information. I don't know what roads have been done. I just know that we didn't do anything one year, and we did some stuff another year. So if you could boil it down to what roads we did like this year and next year, start it simple, that would be amazing. And that would be great information for the town meeting. I understand you want to let Merrimack Valley Planning crank out the big worksheet, that's fine. But you're in charge here in the town, you're making the decision. You're the decision-making guy. I would like to make sure that we're getting the information out there and everybody understands all the things that you are trying to do, okay?
And since I've had that problem with the Salem Street Dam, I have been looking for funding sources. It's dead end after dead end, because it just doesn't strike, like, there are just certain parameters that grants follow, and it just doesn't hit them all. So I've been reaching out to multiple engineering firms, funding sources for the state, DCR, Mass Works, Mass DOT, and it just, it just seems like, for whatever reason, that dam, that equalizing dam, that's what they call, it doesn't strike enough of the the parameters to get the funding, so. And to go back, the Chapter 90 money, you guys signed pieces of paper that said the Chapter 90 money was going to the 97 sidewalk project.
Okay, I guess I didn't fully understand. I know, no, no, no.
You guys signed it off on a 400,000, so that was a matching grant. We got 400,000, complete.
Yes, but...
And we pitched in 400,000.
Right, but I guess we should have made it more public that we were going to pause the road program while we did that, which is fine. As Jason said, you know, we want people to be able to walk along the street.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of an information transparency thing, I think, that we need to make this whole thing work better. And I feel for you trying to find the money. The only thing I can offer is I know that Mass Municipal Association reached out to us and offered that we can send in a four-page letter to the governor and lieutenant governor, telling them state programs and things that aren't working for us. And from what you just said, Chapter 90 is not working.
Right.
Okay, so that can go in the ladder.
That's the other reason why we're not paving 97, because Mass DOT has a maintenance program. That road, actually Route 97 strikes that parameter. So I brought it to their attention that we've done all new sidewalks, handicap ramps. There'll be crosswalks going in in the next couple of weeks, once my line guy gets here. So once they do an evaluation, we're on their list. And that's another reason why to hold off on that road, because we might actually have the state, fingers crossed, pay to repave that road. So that's another reason to hold off on that, on paving that road, because if they can pave it and we can save that money, that pushes us a little further ahead as well.
Okay, good.
I always have the best interest of the town in mind, trust me.
I know, I just, I don't have that information when people ask me. That's why I'm asking for just the little bit, so that I can say, oh, yes, this is what they're doing. And again, at the town meeting, I think is a great opportunity to put something in the booklet that everybody gets, so they can get the understanding too. Because they need to know that your cost of materials has gone through the through the ceiling, just like the supermarket costs have. They need to understand that, so that they can see where you're coming from too.
I agree.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Ed, something else?
Yeah, just a follow-up. You know, I think it makes sense to concentrate on the Salem Street, the pipe there, before some of these other streets are paved. Because if you have to block that road off, you're going to be funneling some of this traffic and some heavy trucks onto some of these secondary roads, where they may deteriorate some of the secondary roads that aren't built up to the standards of the Class A road on Salem Street.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, 100%.
And no one likes detours.
No one likes detours.
No one likes detours.
Talk about the people on our front road.
I don't like detours.
They'll love the no detour on their road now.
Some of them said they'd rather have it blocked off all the time.
You know, and then you put up the signs, local traffic. Well, I'm always local traffic, so, you know, I'm driving around the horse. All right, thank you very much.
Catastrophic dam.
We did have one question on the Zoom.
We had a Zoom question, all right. Who's up on the Zoom?
Hi, hello, this is Becky Boucher, I'm at 765 Salem Street. So the dam is basically right there in my yard. So I'm just wondering if we do get a lot of snow. I know winter is one way or another. Is there any additional concern with that? Just because, I mean, I live so close to the street, the snow piles up. I see the sides of the clouds that go by, it shakes my house. I was just curious if that was an additional concern along with the normal trucks that we have, not in the winter time?
So that it has always been a concern that that road is, and I only know from being on it during the emergencies, that it's a very, very heavily traveled road by trucks in excess of 100,000 pounds. So it is a concern. I think the repairs that we've made and we have in place now have stabilized the issue. So I'm not nearly as concerned as I was previously during the beginning of the summer. But I monitor that road. It's the first thing I see every day. It's the last thing I see every night. And my wife can tell you, we come here on Saturday sometimes when it's raining heavy, just to make sure that road's safe. So it's just as much of a worry for me as it is for you. So I keep my eyes on it. 100%.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I think that...
I'll wait for another Zoom.
We have another Zoom? All right, thank you, sir, for coming. Next up, we have another presentation on 150 Center Street. Strawberry Fields feasibility study from the project team. Nits Engineering and Ennis Associates and RKG Associates. How are you, sir?
Good evening, very well, thanks. How are you?
Wonderful. Please state your name for the record.
If I do so, I'm also trying to join the Zoom meeting, because that's the easiest way. For introduction, my name is Brian Kramer, project manager with Nits Engineering. And with me tonight is my colleague Emily Ennis, who's in Nis Associates. Let me share my screen, I believe. I believe you all have a PDF copy of this as well. So what I have before you tonight, we're going to go through a brief presentation and an overview of the 150 Center Street feasibility study was funded by a Mass Development grant that the town received in January this year. Be about 10 to 15 minutes, we can open up to questions, et cetera. Sort of summarizing our team's progress. Great, it's progressing. All right, so who has been working on this? So the town received the grant funding back in January. We were brought on board around April. There were representatives from Nits Engineering, which was the prime consultant, Emily from Ennis, and Chris, as well as Eric Halverson from RKG Associates, the Economic Development Assistant. We started with a few months of site analysis, did a site tour with the town, looked through all aspects of the site environmental constraints, held a community engagement session here back in May. We worked through a few site design concepts and then a series of schemes that I'll be sharing shortly in advance of a July 27 community engagement session that was held here, as well as on Zoom. There was refinement of that scheme to develop a preferred scheme. That was in advance of unveiling that on the town's website, as well as presenting that at Groveland Day just a few weeks ago. And then here we are tonight to present it all to the select one. For anyone who, I presume you all know, but just anyone else in the audience who isn't familiar with the site, 150 Center Street is a 62-acre parcel on the north side of Center Street. It's abutted by the DPW Yard and a number of commercial businesses that have frontage on Center Street. It also abuts the Greenway Pop Parcels to the north and St. Patrick's Church on the west side. The rules and responsibilities for the project, I apologize about that green there, it's a little tough to read. So essentially, the town applied for a site readiness grant through Mass Development. This grant is specific to commercial or mixed-use redevelopment of our new utilized parcels. Mass Development awarded the town that grant back in January, as I mentioned, and relied on technical assistance from an oncologist consultant team, which is us. We've been working through researching, understanding these existing conditions, understanding potential uses, what land use and zoning implications would be with changing the uses of the site and developing a recommended scenario. We've worked through, again, you know, opportunities and constraints around what could and cannot happen on the site, refined those based on public feedback and market analysis, and engaged with the community as we go along. In addition to the site redevelopment plan, the town's also getting a site base map, survey quality, wetland resource area delineation, to understand the true existing additions of the property. The last base plan we had was from 2013-ish, when the town purchased the property. So updated existing additions. Additionally, we conducted a market analysis, RKG helped with that. I'll go through in a second here the results of that. That looks certainly within Groveland and within the broader Merrimack Valley of what the market demands are. And then transitioned to a fiscal impact assessment. So what that does for the town is it analyzes the program that's being proposed in the preferred development scheme, what net benefits and what net costs would be to the town if it were to go through dispossessing the property and putting it out for an OFP or redevelopment of any sort. Along with all those, you know, technical responses, along the way, we've been really trying to hear from and solicit feedback from the community. Quite a bit of engagement and folks who visited the town's tents during Groveland Day. It was really nice to meet everybody in person. In addition to those meetings, we had an online public survey that had 135 responses, about 1,500 visits to the project website. Here's some of the screenshots and views from the engagement sessions that have happened. In summary, that's distilled down many, many, many comments and lots of conversations over the last six months. But the top three, you know, issues and constraints that we heard loud and clear is that the site was bought in 2013 to protect and retain aquifer... Sorry. Retain water quality that's headed to the aquifer. It's within a Zone 2 wellhead protection district, I'll go through that in a second here. But we heard loud and clear from the community that was one of the main purposes of purchase of the property, was to protect aquifer, to retain and really potentially even expand the existing trail network, the really great trail network that exists on the north of the site. And that it could be potential future home for a community center, maybe a center on aging, but an all-ages type of community center that is a facility that the town would love to see. In addition to a community center, which is obviously not a tax revenue generating proposition, to fill that development out, or allow additional development on the site to complement a community center, we asked residents lots of different ways, what would you like to see in addition to a community center if that was going to go on the site? General, that there was a preference towards commercial restaurants, commercial space in general, retail as well. And some, I'd say, mixed responses towards light manufacturing when presented with, you know, imagery that looked more high bay warehouse, not as favorable, when presented with imagery that looked more like a brewery or a makerspace, or, you know, a type of business where you'd also have some retail aspects to it. But there was manufacturing that was generally positively received. During that initial portion of the project, we went through a market analysis. This is the, you know, very Cliff Notes version of that. But what the market demand is for certain uses within the region and potentially for the site. The community center, generally, they're going between 10 and 15,000 square feet. But generally, 15,000 square feet is kind of the going rate for the size of that building. There is demand, but limited in about 5,000 square feet of light industrial, similar square footage for small condo and office uses, specifically to, you know, healthcare providers, lawyers, engineers, those types of uses. One of the biggest draws is this idea of destination or experiential retail. I think, you know, the easiest local example is probably Market Street and Linfield, though that scale is probably not appropriate for the site. But that's the thing I think we can all have some experience with. In addition, we found that there was a pretty strong demand for housing. I think we've all experienced the draw for housing over the last several years, that there is a demand there. So from that, we developed a few concepts that resulted in a few schemes. So the difference between the concepts and the schemes are, if development's going to happen, where should it happen on the site? That's what the concepts were trying to suss out. The schemes were developed to show a progression of site development. If it was developed with a community use, like a community center, or what you're seeing in Scheme 1, right, that's the first part of the scheme. Those are all non-revenue generating options, a community garden, a pavilion. But that does not really fill out the entire site. So of the 62 acres, this is, you know, building on itself, essentially one acre up to about 15 acres of development. And all of the options, we sort of tried to concentrate development on the most impacted and currently heavily used portion of the site. That's generally where the current access point is and the recreation fields that were there up until a few years ago. And sort of left the rest of the site to be undeveloped conservation land. This is just, I mean, it's relatively difficult to read, I get it. But the point of this graphics is to show the overall lack of development on the east and west portion of the site, trying to maintain some of those natural areas. Zooming into the center of the proposed development scheme, see that about 80% of the site is preserved as conservation land, either through the turtle nesting habitat, conservation destruction, other, you know, wetland buffers, a very generous wetland buffer on the existing wetlands on site. Sort of try to keep any development on the site as compact as possible and centered around a new community use, so the community center, performance center, you know, an open green space, all kind of congregated around that area. Basically, everything south of the east-west road there is showing about 55 units of residential. We heard pretty loud and clear, though, and I want to be very frank about this, during the public engagement sessions, that housing is not preferred by many, right? That there is a a real strong opinion of many folks we asked for feedback from, that housing is not what they want to see here. I think that the general tone, what we sort of asked, why not, is there was not a strong preference towards single family. there was not a strong preference towards single-family, that within reason, that smaller units were acceptable, right? But that this was also during the process of an override vote. And I think that the impacts on the school district and the impacts on town costs, you know, weighed heavily on that, those opinions. I can stop there if you have a quick question?
Well, we need more businesses. I mean, you put more school buses in front of houses and the taxes continue to escalate. So, there might be a demand for housing, but the impact on the people already here is significant.
Agreed, agreed. I do want to comb through the fiscal impact assessment that essentially addresses that component. So, we went through, this is all included in the backup of the PDF you have. But of the preferred scheme, the 55 units there, plus the additional commercial and retail uses that are proposed, the net revenues that would be generated by those uses would be about a half million dollars a year. Generally, the expenses there, particularly the cost on the public schools, are about, you know, amount to approximately 360. And I definitely got the math wrong here. No, I didn't. Alright, so yeah, 548 minus the 361 cannot get you to the same number.
No, it can't.
Can't get you to the same number. Pardon. I will fix this, give me a second.
It's more like 150.
Either way, I think in the interest of time, we can do the math. Generally, it's going to be about 200,000, with net positive impact. I apologize.
150 gets you to 500.
Can you put that back? What was the estimated commercial property tax?
How come this doesn't have that much?
62,000, 62,900.
Based on how many square feet, you know? Is that like retail units with a mixed use above? What was the?
Generally, yes, it's retail with mixed use above.
Is that the style of, I guess, the type?
Yeah, that's the type that we're proposing. In general, it's, I believe, about 10,000 square feet in total of commercial and light industrial uses.
Could you say, the slide that you showed, on the one that I have, it shows a total net annual municipal cost of 269,41, not 361.
Yeah, I also apologize about that one.
So is that not okay either?
That is not correct.
So the 361 is the better number, you think? Okay, so, alright, so.
Essentially, the answer is neither is correct. And I'm going to fix it.
Okay, alright, that's neither, okay, which slide?
The numbers in the appendices, just the summary slide is, we messed up the math. It's a poor Excel formula. The backup that's also included in there is correct.
Got your question?
Yes.
Maybe I wasn't paying attention, so help me out here. So these projections, what are these based on? The town owns the land, so is it based on us leasing out the property? The cost of development? Who's going to foot the bill for the capital to, you know, build all of this stuff?
It's based on a disposition of the property and the sale of the property to the developer.
We have to sell the land, and then let a developer come in here and do whatever project was approved.
With many, many caveats, right? That's the point of this project.
Many, many what?
Caveats and essentially stipulations on what is allowed and what the town prefers.
Yeah, restrictions, give them some flexibility in style and moving around the pieces. But essentially, it would be a plan.
Correct.
Of what they could do. And is it coming up as to what we could sell the land for, in the plans?
We did not do an appraisal of the property. That is a separate effort, it's not part of the scope of this project. It was done not too long ago, and I think it is worth updating if the town wants to have an appraisal done.
So it's basically a projection of tax revenues.
Correct.
And minus expenses. But if we could sell the land and pay off the debt, then that would give us some tax relief, too.
Yep, that's true.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, so I understand that you're getting the proposals from the people you interacted with. But in addition to that, are you using any other measure of whether or not a business would want to locate there, or feel that they could make any money there? Because my biggest concern would be, if businesses wanted to go there, when they have come to the town already, starting asking us for this, to buy some of this land, and I'm not aware of anybody coming asking to buy the land and put their restaurant on it. So, I get, my sense is that we have to create some kind of a destination, and there would have to be a housing component to it, to anchor that destination, or nobody's going to be at that destination. You know what I'm saying? Nobody's going to be there initially, and no business is going to want to be there. So that's my concern. I mean, this is, I know the Market Street thing and all that, and that's anchored to some really large, huge apartment population that can walk to it. And that's where, I'd like to have something done with this property that looks as good as these pictures, but I'm just equally concerned with.
It's not near a highway, it's isolated, too, right?
Yeah, it's not near a highway. So where has this been done? Like, in the middle of a little town like us, a field that nobody wants? 60 acres of the pits, we call it, not somebody feels. Has somebody been able to pull this off? I guess I'd just like to know that.
Yeah. Do you mind if I defer and let?
Yeah, no, go ahead and present this, I just want.
When we get to my spot, I'll, and some of your questions I can answer on my part.
Does it work someplace else, that you can show Kathy, and us, too? Everyone?
Maybe a field trip, you know?
Do you want to finish up just?
Kathy, pause for now, alright?
Yeah, I'm paused.
Alright, carry on, sir.
I will absolutely come back to that, though. So in summary of the preferred development programs that we heard, and from least to most, in generating uses, as well as non-tax revenue generating uses. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emily, who's I think going to go through a few slides, as well as answer those questions.
Alright, hopefully you can all hear me. For the record, my name is Emily Ennis from INNIS Associates, and I was part of the team, obviously, and focused on the zoning aspect of it. I just want to walk back to these two diagrams, because I think they're critically important in being able to answer the questions that you've just asked, and then we'll move forward and talk about both the zoning and the disposition, which would control what's happening on this site. So, as we listened to the information that the public brought to us, in addition to the work that we all did in terms of understanding the existing conditions, figuring out how to balance a number of uses on the site was critically important. And so, obviously, Brian has mentioned aquifer already. There's significant environmental resources on the site that we wanted to protect. So, that really narrowed us down to that smaller slice of land. And so, looking at the up to 15 acres, this is where your questions about the draw, the number of businesses, the number of housing really comes in. You do have a unique site. There was always the possibility of saying, hey, 60 acres, you can put a lot on there. There are developments around that can fit onto a 60-acre site. When we worked on the master plan, we showcased some of those sites. However, that did not go to addressing the environmental concerns that people had. So you're looking at a smaller site to allow for development, to allow for the protection. Once you get onto the small site, your concerns about a draw are critically important. And so, the market study that RKG did, tried to understand how much commercial might come to a site like this. And that's when Brian mentioned 10,000 square feet of commercial. That's basically the restaurant, the light industrial brewery-type commercial that we're looking at, a little bit of neighborhood-type services, because if you're going to have residential there, you don't want everybody having to jump into their car for every little thing. So it's not a lot of commercial, for the very reasons that you mentioned. It's not off a big highway, you have to have people come there. What it is, though, is tied to two components. There's a bit of commercial, on the one side, it's tied to the residential use, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, why that is later. On the other side, it's tied to the community use. And this is where it starts to get interesting as a site, because the other uses that we heard, Brian's mentioned some of them already, the idea of a community center, maybe it's a council on aging, maybe it's an all-ages, the idea of an outdoor performance space that we heard, links to the trails. So we have examples of like a trailhead kiosk that could maybe, you know, rent out equipment, provide hot chocolate, provide bathrooms, all of that. Those are all community services. Problem is, they're going to cost the town money, right? So we need to talk about in the disposition section, how we do that. Then there are commercial uses, the small retail, the brewery, that act as a combined draw, right? Imagine going for a walk on the trails, coming by, having dinner and a drink afterwards. If you're lucky, you get to walk home, or otherwise drive. So those are your draws. Then the housing helps support some of that in two different ways. One is, because you'd have people right there who could take advantage of the retail or the restaurant. But the other is, in this market, in today's market and for the foreseeable future, the housing is the revenues that's going to support the commercial. You're not going to get, to your point, 10,000, 15,000 square feet of commercial all by itself, even with the trails. You need that component, that balance of uses across the site. And so, the numbers, which I know Brian will work on as soon as I give him his laptop back, the numbers will show that the housing component, even with the cost of the schools, the housing is the driver of the net revenue to the town. However, although RKG's work showed that there was market demand for, I think it was 91 ownership units and a smaller number of rental units, we're only showing 55 units, which could be either ownership or rental, because we appreciate that there was a concern from residents about the number of houses, or the amount of housing on the site. But you should know that ignoring that number at the bottom, you can see residential property taxes coming in at 469,000, project costs of public schools at 224,000. Housing is in fact a net positive, and that's what can drive that. This is a feasibility study. It allows you to understand what could happen on the site. It brings in the public opinion. As part of that, we're also showing how the zoning could change, if this is something you're interested in. To your point earlier about anything that happens on the site, it's going to be a combination of a land, of disposition by the town to a developer, which means there's going to be a land disposition agreement, which can control what happens on the site. And then zoning is the other control that happens on the site. So we are assuming, for the purposes of this feasibility study, that the town is disposing of the amount of land that would be under development. And what we wanted to do was make sure that we covered the uses that are in here in these zoning recommendations, and thought of it most likely as a campus-style development. So one developer, or a master developer, who is then perhaps, again, depending on the disposition agreement, parcelling off certain elements to be developed. So the master developer might come in, they might do the housing, somebody else does the commercial, they might do the whole thing. But the idea is that it is this campus style, there is a relationship among all the components together. When we talk about the disposition process, that has implications for how much of the land the town retains in relation to the community aspect of it. Starting with the zoning, however, you'll see on the left-hand side, this is currently zoned industrial. You could have residential as part of a planned unit development overlay district. But what's interesting, as we look at the uses on the site proposed in this concept plan versus the existing zoning, is they haven't changed much. Agricultural uses are allowed now. We're proposing community gardens and a public meadow. Commercial recreation, indoor and outdoor, is allowed now, and we are proposing the same thing. Retail, restaurant, office uses, some industrial uses, same thing, allowed now. We're proposing light manufacturing, but otherwise office, retail, and restaurant. We are proposing municipal community use, which is not really covered under your zoning. And we're proposing a different type of housing style. In terms of dimensional standards, you'll see on the left-hand side, the existing industrial district, this is one acre zoning, minimum lot size. Because we're envisioning this as a campus-style development, in part governed by a land disposition agreement, there's no lot size or frontage requirements, because it's all on the interior of the site. You're not building on the street. And we're recommending that the building types, the types that were shown in the market analysis, govern height setbacks and other items. Lot coverage in impervious area would remain exactly the same as they are now. Building types, so we have several different building types in this draft. And so you can see the conceptual floor plate, which is what the analysis was based on, stories in both, or height in both stories and feet, and the front setback to govern the relationship. No building is higher than 45 feet under this zoning proposal, and that would be the mixed-use buildings. And we would add other parts to the zoning recommendations. So that would include changes to the definitions, developing design standards and guidelines. Development standards are those things that would be required. So we're suggesting signage master plan, certain setbacks, low-impact landscape techniques to keep onsite stormwater, dark sky compliant lighting, other standards that would help protect the environmental aspect. Design guidelines are more of guidance on the architectural styles, on the landscape design, on the streetscape furniture materials. So that's on the zoning side. On the Chapter 30B manual you see up here, that governs the disposition process for the town. So you would need to make a number of decisions as the town, and these are laid out, or will be laid out in the draft report. Part of that is how much land you're disposing of, and what purpose you're disposing of it for. You'll need to declare the properties available for disposition. So are you keeping all the land with the trails on it? Are you keeping all the land that's being shown as the community services in here? Are you working with the developer to, for example, have them own the land, but you would lease back the areas for the community? Are you working with the developer to act as a tenant for a community building, and they're helping to build part of it? These are all options that you would have in thinking about that. You would have to get an appraisal on the value of the property, and that's going to depend on how much you keep and how much you dispose of. And then you need to develop a request for proposal. And this is a powerful document, because to your point about, why has nobody come forward? By declaring the land surplus, you're saying it's available. By putting out a request for proposals, you're saying to developers, here's what we want to see. Here are the criteria by which you will judge, we will judge your proposal. Here's how we want to work with you as the developer to develop the property to meet the community goals. And so, the draft report will lay out the different decision points you have to make, and the different choices that you might have as you look at that. Once RFP is out, you will get a series of proposals. You will have set in the RFP criteria for how you're going to deal with those proposals. Those proposals come in, you usually interview the developers, and then you choose a preferred developer and execute that purchase and sale and the land disposition agreement. That includes many of the controls around how the site will be developed. So in summary, we're trying to show the uses that have been determined by the market analysis are appropriate for the site at the levels that the public have indicated they're interested in, trying to give you the most opportunity for how you would respond in terms of working with the developer to address those, to address the desires of the community with what the market is showing is feasible. And I'm going to turn this over to you to, oh, so just finishing off on the how you would do the community side, is leveraging the additional real estate taxes that you would get. Obviously, those would go into the general fund. You could, of course, use some of them to help support the community uses on the site, especially for those components like the parks or the trails for which there are grant sources that exist. Brian, do you want to take the last?
So recognizing that's quite a bit to take in, and lots of potential questions, I think I'll keep it brief. Thank you very much. It has really been a pleasure of ours to work on this with you. We look forward to, you know, the questions, and should have the draft report ready with the town, either at the end of this week, or shortly the following week, and look forward to comments. But yeah, any questions this evening, happy to answer them to the best that I can.
So what's the next step after you finalize the report? I mean, are you going to come back, or what's the committee going to do? I mean, what goes, what comes next?
So the short of it is, it is to the town, whether you So the short of it is, it is to the town whether you'd like to go through that 30B process, whether you'd like to dispossess it.
The third what, I'm sorry?
The, if you'd like to go through that 30B process.
30B, what does 30B mean? That's the?
If you'd like to advance the dispossession of the land. You'd like to sell it, in short, right? Or if you'd like to keep it, develop an active management program for the, for the site is the alternative.
But that would require appraisals and a town meeting, warrants and town meeting vote and?
That's correct.
List it for sale, I guess, to even, even put it out there.
That's correct. Okay.
Just a couple of questions. We have entitled a preferred scheme. Who's preferred scheme?
Well, so I guess the answer would be the towns, right? It is us as consultants assisting the town to develop a vision for the site, you know, collecting a lot of feedback and also, you know, recommending a feasible solution to development on the site. Recognizing that everyone will have their own preferences to what happens on the site. I feel like we've done our best to codify and document all of those preferences. This is, the preferred scheme is sort of an amalgamation of our best judgment, what we understand the town's, you know, hopes and wishes are for the site, and what is, you know, market and economically feasible for the site. So it's sort of a combination of everything is the long answer to that question.
Yeah, you did. Did you figure out what, what is the cost? What's the cost for the town for town employees to do any maintenance on the site?
That is factored, although I lost the zoom, so I apologize, but.
It's in our slides. It's in the appendices of our presentation.
On your, on your slide, it was around 97,000.
Thank you.
Appendix one.
What was the figure again?
97,000.
97,000 is what would cost?
Annually, yep.
Annually, it would cost the town for maintenance, though that's additional employees. Pretty well taxed out with what we got now. I didn't see that, I didn't see that down here.
It's in the appendices.
The only thing that I saw on that was, and I'm not sure that it made, it's what you were talking about, but.
No, that was a slide that needed to be corrected.
On the financial impact analysis, is that what you mean by project municipal expenditure for commercial employees, 5,200?
That's, yeah, yes, that is what that means.
So that's what you figure it would cost the town for employees to maintain the site?
Public works, services, fire, police, yep.
That's all?
That, yes, that is the, you know, what our economic advisors are telling us. I mean, that, that's the data I have to go on. Right, to provide services to the site. Right, not, not the maintenance of the road, right, the internal roads.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm looking for, the maintenance, I'm looking for everything. Like the maintenance, like you have set, you have, in this preferred scheme, you have a, bear with me.
Mr. Chairman, tell him to look in the appendix.
You have, a, you have an outdoor pavilion, you have a performance center, you have a community center. How many additional employees for the community center?
Yeah, he has.
How many, we've got to maintain the performance center, the outdoor pavilion, but 5,200, not going to go very far.
Understand, so I agree with you. The municipal, the non-tax revenue generating uses are going to take staff time. They are either going to be included within the construction of them, the upfront capital costs included with the development, right? Or, you know, that, that is excluded from the sale of the property, and we'd have, you know, the town would have to go through other sources, right? Grants or, you know, other options to find funds to construct that building and operate that building on an annual basis.
Net new annual municipal costs, 26, 269, hold my glasses on, 269,000. That's going to eat up, the municipal costs are going to eat up most of that for employees. It's got to be maintained. Somebody's got to do that work, keep the building clean. The outdoor performance center, somebody's got to take care of that and maintain it.
Correct.
Because that's going to eat up most of that 278,000, 269,000.
That's fair, right? There is a net positive benefit, but yes, the.
The net gain to the town was zero.
I don't know that that's true, right? I would have to check that. But there is a net positive to the town. Yes, there is, there are costs associated with maintaining the public facilities.
And I think that's important to know before we jump into this, what the, what the cost for the town is going to be. I mean, how many employees, additional employees are we going to need? Because it takes into account retirement benefits, vacation, sick time, medical, and I don't know how, I don't know how you figure that in, but I think before we jump into this, we need to know the true costs. And I don't have anything else, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mark, you got anything?
I was just kind of curious on, did we ever actually talk to the couple businesses that are down there and see if they wanted to buy some land before we go sell it? Or if the highway department wants to extend their yard?
Yeah, I mean, was that considered?
We did speak to one gentleman who owns the, I don't, I do not know his address, the.
Landscaper?
Yes, thank you.
156.
Yeah, I think it's 156. Drove by the site, didn't, you know, we didn't specifically ask him, do you want any portion of the site? But, you know, I think he's been there a long time and.
Yeah, I was just curious, because, I mean, there are two companies down there that have been here for a long time, and before we go build something behind them, I feel like they should have a, a chance to maybe buy a sliver, or if the highway department needs more land for the massive compost pile we have, or any of that stuff, before we go, you know, building if something else.
Yeah, we, we definitely did want to be respectful of that in the, you know, the scheme development, and that the eastern portion of the site is generally, you know, shown as undeveloped or, you know, so we want to leave that available for future uses. One of those uses could be an expansion of those parcels. But that is a fair question, you know, happy to work with the town to make sure that's in the report.
What did we pay for that 60, because was it 3.8 million?
Yep.
3.625.
So like, what's going to be the turnaround on that?
Plus interest.
Is the question, what's the, I can't even estimate what a, what an appraised value for that would be.
I mean, because I want to say, back before we bought it, it was only.
One and a half million. Did you look at ground leases in the, I'm looking at this and your projection, I mean, I'm skeptical about the costs, because, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
What, I'm sorry. What's the matter? I'm talking, I'm talking.
I know, but everybody keeps referring to the fact that there's no cost here, and it's all in the appendices here.
All right, fine, Kathy.
No, including the cost of maintenance, and people just need to read your packets.
Let me ask my question about the ground lease, please. Please, please, please. Don't need a lecture. Excuse me, sir. Did you analyze or look at the market value on ground leasing that? Because it's basically 20, less than 20,000 a month to come up at 200,000 and change, so seems like a large parcel not to get a price per square foot on a ground lease. Was that, was that looked at?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we did. I mean, that.
I don't think we were looking at it straight as a development.
As a sale, because.
As a sale, you could do a ground lease. We were looking at it kind of the other way around, was that potentially, is that you would sell the whole thing, the ground lease, but I don't believe that's possible upon eternal ground leasing to the public, the market. We can, I'm taking notes.
Yeah, I mean, if you, the price per foot on that, if it's industrial, I mean, and you talk about commercial, and commercial is a general term, there could be retail, there could be office, there could be, you know, non-residential uses, so light industrial. So if we would have listed for a ground lease, maybe we could, you know, compartmentalize it or break it up, and it could be on a demand, and the town would be a landlord and collect the rent and still maintain control over it.
I think that is something we can look into. I think there's, the reason we didn't is the lack of utilities and the lack of services to the site today, right? That town, that cost would then need to be borne by the town prior to it being leased, right? To get, I mean, there's sewer going through the site, but there's no sewer to the western portion of the site, there's no water, you know, to the buildings themselves, it's just to the hydrant in the street. So there's, there's costs associated with doing a ground lease and getting services to those leased facilities. But it is a fair point, that it was not really part of it, you know, the, what we've looked at, what we looked at is generally based on the premise that, of the dispossession of the land.
If, if we would have leased it out, what I'm thinking is, would it provide enough for the debt service on it, and yet the town would still own the property and have it, you know, in 20 years or 50 years? So if you don't need to sell it, you know, once you sell it, it's gone forever. So if you're the landlord, landlord's a good job to have, you know, you just, it's an annuity, it's a perpetual cash flow, and you can always make adjustments to it. So I think that ought to be looked at as an option. Kathy, you got that?
No, I'm not. So I think people watching this show might be under the impression that there was no financial analysis done, it's all in the packet in the appendix, the cost to the town of this property being used, the cost to the general government, 11% increase, police, 51% increase, fire, 63% increase, public works, 16% increase, all of the services, 10% increase, all factored in. And you start to look at rational choices. We all know how often any one of us might drive down to strawberry fields, AKA the pits, not much. So what business is going to be able to stay in business and lease there? Another storage unit, another dumping place to put dumpsters for people to dump stuff in? I mean, depends on kind of, what do we have as a vision for this town? What do you want our town to look like 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, when some of us aren't here anymore? What do we want to leave behind for that piece of land? Okay? And I think you took a good stab out of here, and you've brought up a lot of things for us to think about and to work on. And I think that for years, everybody's been saying, what are we going to do with that $3.6 million piece of land that's costing me an override? And now something's been done with this, some ideas have been floated, some real financial analysis has been presented, maybe not reviewed as carefully, maybe everybody should take it home and review it in more depth, is what I'm thinking, because it's all here. And I, and I say quite honestly, my, my personal opinion, prior to being a teacher, I was an economist for the electric industry, would be that if you don't include a housing component in something you put down there, the only thing that would survive would be something that's going to be an eyesore. And if that's what people want, more storage units, more places for people to dump stuff they don't want, that's what it'll look like. Seems like storage units are the name of the game here in Groveland, but when we looked at the master plan, and we looked at the amount of tax revenue that comes in, there's a vast difference between what we get for storage units versus office space or a restaurant or residential housing. So you really have to think about what's best for the town, not just today, but 10 years from now, what do we want it to look like? And if, if we have an opportunity here to try and really look at this and think about, could this be something that we could do? I'd like to see us look at it, not just shove it away and say, nope, we can't do that, because we haven't done anything with that land since we bought it, except complain about it. And I'd like to see us at least try to do something. I think that you've given us a lot of information to think about, a lot of things that I myself didn't know a lot about, I would have to look into more and understand better. But to our benefit, not only do we have a town administrator, but we have a town administrator with a background as a town planner. So I think that puts us in a very, very good position to, to direct a multitude of questions her way, which she's always good at answering. But I think you've, you've opened up our eyes to something that we need to look at and we need to think about, and we need to look at these costs and go through it before we dismiss it as not a possible thing. Let's, let's take a good look at it as a board. And just a lot I don't understand in it, the 30B setbacks, how can we protect those houses, how can we protect the aquifer? But we have a lot of expertise here in our conservation commission to help us on it. So I think we should, we should start looking at this and thinking about floating some ideas out there, see what the town is prepared to do. If they say they don't want to sell any land, that's their decision, then they will pay off the override. The land will stay there. But the impression I got from most people was they would like to see something done with part of that land. And so I think you've given us some, some really good information that I feel we need to take more time on and look through more carefully, so that everybody understands it, not just on our board, but in the public eye too. So thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, I just have a question in terms of something that Kathy had brought up, the large apartment complex, because we have one going in, and it's one and a half miles away, walking the roads. Would that be close enough to help support some of the businesses in commercial?
Generally, yes, right? That's about a 20 to 25 minute walk, you know? Given Yale Street, I think, is sort of the connector, Harvard Street, I don't believe that there's, you know, pedestrian accommodations on that. It's a small residential neighborhood, though, right? I mean, I recognize it is sort of a cut-through street, but, but I think it's plausible that there are some folks, you know, supporting businesses on this site from that new, newer development, whether by car or by foot.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I had.
Ed?
Did you do a traffic study?
So in short, it's not a traffic study. There are transportation impacts included within the report, generally additional trips assumed on Center Street and additional trips that would be generated at Salem Street intersection and the Washington Street intersection. But it is not a holistic traffic study like you would see at a normal development proposal. That's, you know, that's not the scope. We also don't have the program to really codify what the traffic impacts would be. So a very light traffic study is probably the easiest way to understand it, but yes.
So you don't, you don't have an estimate of the vehicles per day that would be in and out of this complex?
We do. It's on this slide deck. It wasn't really the focus of tonight's, but I'm happy to provide it. We do have additional, you know, trips generated, whether that triggers a warrant article or, you know, a stop sign or a signal on Center Street. We have some recommendations on that, but we think, you know, given the amount of trips, generally, it's, you know, in the territory of a stop sign, a three-way stop type intervention.
Well, that, yes, coming out of the complex, but what I'm looking at is like the impact, the traffic impact like at Washington and Center Street, would, would the warrants make it necessary for a traffic light there? Would, like cutting through the neighborhood from, from Salem Street down through Harvard Road, Yale Street, Staunton Road, Dartmouth? I was just wondering what the, what the impact would be there and how much additional traffic would come out of Center Street to Route 97 and the additional traffic that would come out to Washington Street and Center?
Yeah, they, fair questions. You know, with, with the amount of commercial and the amount of residential we have on the site, not really major, but yes, there would be, there's no question there'd be more trips there than there are today, obviously, because there's nothing on the site today. It did not go, our analysis did not go that far out. We were not, you know, intended to look at all the nearby intersections. But, you know, I think the result and the additional trips per day, looking at a warrant article, you know, sorry, not a warrant article, a warrant decision about stop signs on Center Street and the development itself is something we have. We can certainly look at, you know, adjacent intersections using the, you know, most recent collected traffic data that's available publicly, and we can do that sort of analysis, that would be beneficial for the town.
Thank you.
Anything else this evening?
I think that's good. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to it.
Apologize again about the slide, but.
We're looking forward to the final.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Let's see. For what minutes? We don't have any.
Yeah, we did. I saw a minute. Oh, so it's for next week. Never mind, I read them anyway.
Upper left to lower right. All right, appointments of the board. Number seven, accept the resignation of Stephen Sargent of Hamilton, Mass. as full-time dispatcher effective September 25th, 2023. Is our motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Stephen Sargent of Hamilton, Mass. as full-time dispatcher effective September 25th, 2023.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Stephen, for your service. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Number eight, appointment of Stephen Sargent as full-time officer. Number eight, appointment of Stephen Sargent as full-time officer effective September 25, 2023 through September 25, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make him.
Motion to approve.
That was first. Ed.
Excuse me?
You made the motion?
Yeah.
Is that all right, Jason? I hope you take the second.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? No discussion. Easy peasy. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Number nine, appoint Kimberly Bork of Hempstead, New Hampshire to the position of administrative assistant in the water and sewer department effective September 26, 2023. The position is non-exempt for 37.5 hours per week at $27.60 per hour. Is there a motion? No motions?
Oh, I'll make a motion to appoint Kimberly Bork of Hempstead, New Hampshire to the position of administrative assistant in water and sewer department effective September 26, 2023. Position is non-exempt for 37.5 hours per week at $27.67 per hour.
Is there a?
I'll second.
I second it. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Welcome to Kimberly.
Thank you, Kimberly. Appoint Stephen Baker of Sunset Circle in Groveland as a member of the cultural council effective September 26, 2023. Is there a term on that? Does it need a term, Rebecca?
Until June 30, right? Goes to June 30.
Yes, it should be. So for the cultural council, it's for a six-year term limits?
Six-year term?
Yep.
Whoa. I didn't know we had those.
So I'll tell you for...
Brutal. Is that legal?
It is.
That was what I found for the...
That three was a max, but I could be wrong.
That's what I have on the sheet.
Lifetime tenure. I've never heard of such a thing. I just question it, but, you know.
That's what the, when I looked at the LLC database that the town clerk has for boards and commissions, and it tells you the summary and the terms for each individual board, it has the cultural council, and it has five members, and it has six-year terms.
So do we need an ending date on this?
So the, it would be effective through June 30, 2030.
2030? Okay, because this would be the first year, 24. So I'll make a motion to appoint Stephen Baker of Sunset Circle in Groveland as a member of the cultural council effective September 26, 2023 until June 30, 2030.
I'll second that.
Six years.
I'll go along with it, but, you know, somewhere in the COB webs of my mind, I thought the maximum appointment on a government, I guess, official was three years, but I don't, I'll have to dig for that. Otherwise, I mean, why wouldn't you just say, you know, 20 years, and then nobody can touch it? I mean, it would kind of straddle multiple election terms, so it'd be impenetrable, I guess, untouchable.
I even have it from the cultural, from the town clerk, that the cultural council terms are six years.
All right. Anyone else? Ed?
Are these, these will be the only three members, or are there others on there now?
There are other two members on there, and one of the appointments, being one of your fellow Board of Selectmen members, will be 2027, because they are fulfilling the rest of a term that was already in effect. The individual was appointed on 2021, so that would be the remainder of the term to 2027.
Yeah, now, a tough question. What do they do?
The cultural council?
What do they do?
The cultural council is vital in approving funds that we get through the Massachusetts Cultural Council to distribute to events like the Pine Speedway. They get a cultural council grant. The Ferry House Festival, they get a cultural council grant. I know there's other institutions in Groveland that get it. The library utilizes these funds. So these funds are cultural events in the community that they have to apply for. And in order to receive those funds, we must have a five-member board appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Makes sense.
Do they promote culture?
Culture.
I would think so, based upon those events and community aspects of things.
So they decide where the money goes?
For the allocation for the grants, cultural grants specifically, and only.
And how much is the?
I'm not sure the total allocation. I don't think it's large. I know the grants that they give are pretty small, $1,000, $500, those kind of things. I don't think they're very large. I can get that information for you and send it out at a later date, after the meeting.
Under 10 grand, not 10, 20, you know, not five digits.
I don't, no, no, no. I think it's 10 and under, for sure.
All right, I'll move the, I'll move the...
Already moved it and seconded.
I did?
We moved, yep, we did.
All those in favor? Congratulations, Stephen. Appointment of Jason Naves of Main Street in Groveland as a member of the cultural council effective September 26, 2023.
And that's the one that will be through June 30, 2027.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Jason Naves of Main Street in Groveland as a member of the cultural council effective September 26, 2023 until June 30, 2027.
Second. Discussion, is that subject to his reelection? Never mind. I would draw my question. Anyone else? All those in favor?
I'll abstain.
You'll abstain? Major conflict. Thank you, Jason.
How many years?
Four in favor.
2030.
One abstention. Next up, number 12, appointment of Dave Petrillo of Briscoe Road, Groveland to the cultural council effective September 26, 2023, effective through?
2030.
2030.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Dave Petrillo of Briscoe Road, Groveland to the cultural council effective September 26, 2023 until June 30, 2030.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Five zip, unanimous. Next up, we have town administrators time. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of items. One to go through the warrants. So the payroll warrant for 24-11 is $220,551.67. The bill warrant for 24-11 is $890,945.60. And then I just wanted to take a quick moment to go over the FY23 budget to actual numbers. So on the revenue side, we had estimated $21,258,422. We took in $21,354,519. So we essentially collected about $96,000 more than we estimated. This can mainly be attributed to the fees and permits, the fees that we received for permits and licenses, as well as the sale of surplus vehicles. We had a couple of items in the highway garage, as well as the fire apparatus. And then on the expenditure side, we allocated $21,243,321, and we only spent $20,903,522. So with encumbrances and continued appropriations considered, that'll leave about $316,936 that will fall to free cash. So our initial estimates are showing that we will have about $450,000 of free cash to certify for the fiscal year. That being stated, I would like to ask the board if we could invite our town accountant to the next meeting, so that we can discuss year-end and the reporting requirements, and while those figures that she's been putting together, if the board would be amenable. And then the other two updates is, one to congratulate our building commissioner, Sam Jocelyn. He was elected to the position of president of the Massachusetts Building Commissioners and Inspectors Association, so we're very excited to report that. And then also to alert the board that we have started pumpkin fest planning, and we have set an official date, and we are looking to have that scheduled for October 19, with a rein date of October 20. And that will be here in the front lawn. We are looking to step things up this year. Last year was kind of a let's throw it all together, last-minute kind of thing, to bring it back into play after COVID and the effects of COVID. This year, we're looking to add live music, hay mays, raffles, crew trucks, and we've had a lot of great conversations with the local businesses who are looking to help us out, and we are very excited about that partnership, and we appreciate their efforts.
Thank you, Rebecca. Does anyone have any questions for Rebecca? Guess not. Thanks for the update. Selectmen timing reports. I'll start with Ed.
Oh, you have nothing.
Mark?
I'm good.
Jason?
Yeah, Selectwoman Castrenella has touched on this briefly. The governor's office administration, Healy Driscoll administration, is looking for some feedback. So they're reaching out through the Collin Center, the Massachusetts Select Board Association. And the Select Board Association is reaching out to all the selectmen to get information and ideas on what they want to see reformed. And so one of the things that I've got down listed was the inadequate increases to the Chapter 90 funds, which we actually talked about today, Chapter 70 fund and inequalities, also the senior circuit breaker tax that hasn't been properly updated in quite some time. Also, something that Stephanie brought up earlier today was increasing the recycle value of the bottles to help encourage more people to recycle, as well as putting forth more recycle incentives for towns to get large recycle barrels at a low cost. So those are some of the things that I have, but I encourage everybody that's listening to this to email any of us at the Board of Selectmen to send these ideas to the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, so they can get that four-page letter to the governor's office, and maybe we can stir up some changes. Thank you.
Maybe we can add that to our agenda next time, and we can roundtable it, and maybe in concert, come up with at least a short list or a long list with the Board of Selectmen's endorsement on it, or discussion and votes, and we could submit it as a, as a board. So I'd like to add that to the next agenda. And like Jason said, send in your, send in your two cents, or 10 cents. But we'll, we'll talk about it. But it's good to know. Can't get too deep into it with discussion, but was there a deadline on that, Jason?
October 20th.
20th. Okay, so is that going to be timely?
Yeah, we can do it.
All right. We'll add it to the agenda. Kathy?
So I was going to bring up the same thing that Jason just brought up for a future agenda item. And I think that we should prioritize it, so that our highest priorities come first, because I doubt they'll read all four pages.
Four pages for all the select boards to go through the selectmen?
I mean, if everybody wants to write four pages, fine. I thought it'd be what Chairman McDonald said, more powerful for this board to raise a ruckus as a board and talk about this failing dam on Salem Street that's been going on for 30-plus years, and they give money to other towns for all kinds of nonsense. This is a state highway, right, Salem Street, and we could use some help there, because we can't repair our roads right now, because we got to worry about this dam and the road collapsing. And to me, that's one of our top things right now, because it's halting our maintenance of our roads. And after that, yeah, I want to look at this Chapter 90 thing a little more like I looked at the Chapter 70. I definitely want to bring up the minimum requirement for regional school districts, because I think it's, they've made up a system for dealing with us that's not really spelled out. I think we should complain about it. I think they have mixing apples and oranges in it, from an economics point of view. And definitely Chapter 70 funding, but if we were to get our minimum requirement calculated, the way they do it for every other city in town stands alone, I think it would put us in a position to get more Chapter 70 money, so one would get the other. That's kind of how I look at it, is that let's go after the things that are the most important and the most impact on our, on our town, on the immediate town right now. And other things, I think, just don't put in there, because I just feel like I want to get stuff that's specific to us, and go after it in a big way. I mean, maybe these letters won't get read, but if we have a shot at it, I think a powerful letter from the board, if we can put it together at the next meeting, maybe you can put in some of those legal words, Chairman McDonald, make it sound strong.
Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah.
I'll add some 50 cent words, but we'll add it to the agenda.
Use all the 50 cent words you can come up with.
I don't know, deliberating. And maybe if we, everyone could come up with a list of, like, you know...
Top five.
Your top 10, and we'll see where we have matches, and then we'll consolidate. Otherwise, we'll be here all day and all night. So just maybe a top 10 list, like David Letterman.
I'm going for five.
Any other? Kathy?
Just, I don't know how this thing would work or not work, or whether it's already in the works, but is it an agenda item if you want to have a crosswalk with a light that stops the cars when someone tries to cross the road at Center Street, over across School Street, so they don't get hit?
So you want to add that to agenda item, one of those push-button things where you stare at it? I call it a dummy walk. You're like, walk. Oh, okay.
I watch them, yeah.
I need to be told when to walk.
So, yes, I mean, is that something that we should put on our agenda, or is there another process? That's my question.
We're going to talk about it and get feedback. It's got to be an agenda item while we're deliberating, so I don't want to, you know, have too many of us discuss it. So it's okay to have, you know...
Thank you, yes.
We'll put it on next time if it's important to you.
Yep.
What was the specific area, just so that I can make sure that I have researched on?
Where the bike trail, where we cross, you know, this crosswalk that's at the corner of Center and...
School and Center?
School and Center, yeah.
Next up, and then we'll give a heads up to the people on our posting and anyone who wants to talk about it. Yeah, some towns like Damas, they got the flashing lights there, you know, it's just so you don't get hit by a car, you know?
I'm talking about it.
They have a rail trail over there.
But they, I would say, red lights are just on demand.
All right. Figure out kind of lights we got.
I'll see. Okay.
Who's next? Me? Well, I make the agenda along with Rebecca. Rebecca makes it along with me. She goes first. So if I wanted something on there, I guess I would have put it on there. So next up, we'll go to older unfinished business. We have number 13, lucky number 13, Board of Selectmen, fiscal year 24 goals. Kathy?
You keep pushing it further and further down. It'd be on the back of the page by this.
Yeah, it's Rebecca's draft. I mean, I don't, I don't mess with success here. So, you know, I just, I just rub a stamp.
I do, we do need to, I mean, we need to set at least, you know, five goals. I mean, we have to do our TA contract, at very least. We have to do a, get on to that trash contract this fiscal year, right?
Well, you're on the trash committee. We're waiting for the trash.
I know, but I mean, the whole Board of Selectmen is going to have to get involved at some juncture, and the contract for our TA is coming up, so that has to be a goal of ours. I don't think we can push that off to someone else, right?
What's that?
The town administrator contract? That's ours.
Isn't that up to Rebecca to say, hey, you want to discuss it? I don't know how that works, Rebecca.
Isn't it up to us? We signed it for three years, that we have to put it on as a goal that we're going to get this accomplished?
So you want another agenda item, executive session to?
Well, not yet, but I'm saying, put it in our list of things we're going to get done this year.
We have to.
We just keep saying goals, but we don't say what they are. Are we going to approve a list of goals on the next agenda?
If you would like to just come up with a list, and everyone can brainstorm, but I just, um, goals is kind of like, you know...
I'll make a list.
It's too broad to me. It's like, what is love? I don't know.
Mark, you have permission to hit them. Okay, so I will make a list for the next agenda.
I want to see a man walk on the moon again. That's what I want to see. Or a woman. First woman on the moon.
There we go.
No, we'll add it to the agenda, and then we'll formalize it, and we'll be able to discuss and make possible votes on consolidating.
And just looping back to the town administrator time, just so it didn't go unnoticed, having a town administrator overseeing everything in this town, we came out in the black, not overbudging, not... over budget, under budget, $300-plus thousand. That's pretty good in a tough year when everything cost-wise is going up. That's really good. Thank you, Rebecca, and your staff, everybody involved. Thank you, department heads, but it's working. You're doing well. It's good.
Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. I couldn't think of any.
What about you, Mark? I'm trying not to think. It's getting late.
Well, I can't recall anything that we need.
Yeah. You know, I wish we had coffee in the building. Can we spend some of that free cash on that? Will we put that on the agenda item?
Is there coffee?
We don't? We even hiding it?
In the break room.
Oh, man. Now you tell me, I'm ready to go home. Jason, you got anything?
No, sir.
Kathy?
Uh-uh.
All right. We got a list of correspondence. If anyone wants to read it, I'll just read it off, but we don't discuss or vote on it. There's Pennsylt Regional School District, fiscal year 20. Does that say 20? Fiscal year 20, capital funds?
Correct.
Why does it say 20?
That's what we borrowed.
It's part of the, sorry, it's part of the borrowing that was done with the school.
Gotcha. So it's backdated.
Correct.
But it goes out about 20 years.
Yes.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, August 28, 2023. I guess that's a draft form, if anyone wants to look at it. We have the 2023 Pine Speedway reunion flyer. I guess we can hold that up. Don't miss it. Be there or be square. All right. That's it. Next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be on Tuesday. Bye.
Columbus Day.
Columbus? We still celebrate that, or is it natural?
It's Columbus.
Is it still Columbus?
Yes.
It'll be Tuesday, October the 10th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Thank you, everyone, for watching, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Have a good night.
Motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No discussion, I was told, but any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay.
You want to stick around, Ed? I'll stick around. Kathy?
What?
Unanimous?
I raised my hand. I just, yeah.
I was looking that way. I have eyes on one side of my head.
I was out the door. I stopped down quick in case there was something else.
Meeting's adjourned.